There we go. All right, it is one o'clock. We will call the regular meeting of the Clickatuck County Board of Commissioners to order, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Have a motion. Can I get a motion on the business agenda? Oh, let the record show all three commissioners are present.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda with one add-on under unfinished business, the resolution of matter of an act of moratorium with the site of community and the acceptance of permit applications for large-scale solar projects over one acre in sizes, in size, and townships ranges three fourteen, three fifteen, three sixteen, four fourteen, four fifteen, four sixteen, four seventeen, five fifteen, five sixteen, and five seventeen, all located within Clickatuck County. I would also like to pull number two from the consent agenda for discussion.
Does the motion have a second?
I'll second the motion.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Were you looking at further discussing item number two today or at a future time?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the business agenda with one add-on and removing agenda item number two, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for December 27th, 2022.
I second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Didn't hear you. Did you say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right, we're moving on to citizen comment. This is the opportunity for members of the public to inform the board about your views on issues. This is not a time or place for dialogue, debate, or debate with members of the board. If you'd like to have a conversation with any of the commissioners, please call or email that commissioner. At this point, I'd like to go over some of the ground rules that include the values and behavior that everyone will be expected to adhere to if they choose to give testimony. Please be respectful. Remember that people of goodwill can disagree without being disagreeable. Be civil. Please do not engage in disruptive, discourteous, threatening, disparaging, or otherwise uncivil behavior. You will have up to three minutes to speak. There should be a timer on the Zoom if we've got it working correctly. To ensure equal opportunity for the public to comment, each person may address the board only one time. Lastly, please, at the start of your testimony, give your name and location for the record. With that, do we have anybody in the room that would like to give public testimony? Seeing none, let's go to Zoom. Anybody on Zoom land want to give public testimony? I see one hand up. Gabrielle Gilbert, please, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Today, you have a presentation by Jeff King and 911, and my first commentary is that the interlocal agreement and contract that was between the emergency services and 911 and Washington State Fish and Wildlife has not been re-upped, renewed, and requires a consideration for doing that agreement. The contract lapsed some three years ago, and I seek Jeff King's commentary on why that contract was allowed to lapse, and when will emergency services return to Fish and Wildlife, return to that contract with Fish and Wildlife calls for, to discuss renewing it. And the, and also, Fish and Wildlife made attempts to reach out to renew that contract, and those calls were left, they weren't returned. So I seek also from the board with this presentation that comes in at 1:30 from 911, that discussion for Fish and Wildlife and having that interlocal contract would start up. And in my conversation with Sheriff Songer last night, he is in support of a contract of 911 to Fish and Wildlife. My other commentary is, the board has worked really hard on the mental health, and kudos to everyone. What is blaring, though, is that there is not representation for the Latino community and the mental health issues that they face. And while the board has representation in discussions with the Health Department, with enforcement, I feel that if you're doing something from the ground up, you have to have that Latino representation at that table, because their concerns and their health needs are going to get sidelined if you don't have that representation. And so I seek that the board figures out how you're going to address that and to not allow these continued conversations to have the Latino voice absent. And finally, with childcare as infrastructure, I will reach out to Commissioner Zoller. It is my understanding that previously Commissioner Soder had done research that he was going to send to you. I, I am hoping that that happened, and so if I could get confirmation if that did. And then, I'm not sure if the number that is listed on the county website for Commissioner Soder's old post is your new post number. If that's the case, could you clarify? And then I'm happy to call you as well. So look forward to hearing about how we're going to get Fish and Wildlife back in the loop for 911 calls, so that you can place that energy of enforcement back into their domain when it comes to wildlife, because we buy state laws.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Anybody in the room have citizen comment? We'll go, Ms. Carter, do you have a couple minutes for us? If you do, you have to come to the mic. Hopefully, that one's on.
It's not on. You might want to come down.
Yeah.
I just wanted to provide an update regarding the Goldendale Senior Center and our senior meal program. On Christmas night, the Goldendale Senior Center had a pipe burst.
First, oh, sorry. A pipe burst that caused some substantial damage where they've had to close the senior center, and that's, that's where we hold our senior nutrition program meals on Tuesdays and Thursdays and do our home-delivered meals, deliveries and meal prep out of there. So right now, it's closed until further notice. It's probably going to be some time before it reopens. So staff and myself have been reaching out to other, looking at other options within Goldendale to be able to do a temporary location. The Goldendale Grange is the most appropriate location in terms of having accessibility, the actual kitchen, commercial kitchen preparation ability for us. So been in talks with them. They sound like, it looks like that they, we will be able to rent from them, so that will involve doing a rental agreement with them. So I've sent that on to the prosecuting attorney's office, and then we'll be presenting that to the board for hopefully, hopefully next Tuesday's agenda has not been finalized, but that they are definitely going to rent to us. But I know there's a lot of people that have been asking about, we have been able to do some frozen meal deliveries in the interim to tide people over, and we hope to be able to get those resumed within the next two weeks. But it will probably be several months that we'll have to use that as an alternate location. So that will involve an expense, but we do have sufficient funding in our nutrition contract that we have with the area agency on aging to be able to accommodate that.
Okay. Any questions for my seatmates on this?
For me, but thank you.
Okay.
No, that was my curiosity on how long would the building be down, and you kind of answered that at the end with a couple of months minimum, so.
Yeah, it's really unknown. It's, it was pretty substantial damage. Luckily, I mean, the kitchen didn't have a lot of damage in terms of the freezers, and we have items still stored there and equipment there, and that's fine, but they've had to take out a significant portion of the walls, the carpet, the, unfortunately, the dining room and men's bathroom and their store and everything was, was pretty substantially impacted. So they're working with their insurance company.
That's the city of Goldendale building, isn't it?
Well, the Goldendale Senior Center has their own nonprofit board, and I believe they own that building, because I know in the past, they also had received some support to get a roof replaced. I know Representative Mossbrucker had helped that in the past, but yeah, unfortunately, that cold spell resulted in a pretty significant damage.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up. Thank you for that. As we just went in the room, we'll go back online. I see Rochelle. Go ahead, Damon, location for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Rachel, and I live in Trout Lake vicinity, and I wanted to follow up on Gabrielle Gilbert's comment about getting an interlocal agreement with Fish and Wildlife so that 911 calls about wildlife get diverted to them unless it's a true emergency, because I was, I happened to hear your discussion in November about the need for a second timber deputy and how this was going to strain the county budget to do this. And I heard, it said that, that KCSO doesn't really have enough personnel to patrol all the area of the county, basically, and on these large tracts of land. And so I thought, well, wait a minute, we're paying taxes to the state already for Fish and Wildlife to handle wildlife calls. So why are we paying our KCSO deputies to go take care of wildlife calls when it's really Fish and Wildlife's job to do it? And furthermore, they have more training and tools for doing it. So I would really urge you to, to get that 911 connection back with them, and also, it'll put the ball in their court. If they don't show up, then we can put pressure on them to do their jobs. Right now, I talked to Fish and Wildlife people about this not long ago, and they said that they don't, their law enforcement people don't want to show up in Clickatuck County because they're afraid of being in conflict with KCSO. I guess they've had some negative interactions with them at times. And so they're, they're literally not showing up because of us doing what we're doing through the sheriff's office. So I hope you'll consider that this is really not a very efficient way to spend county money, and our deputies really need to be dealing with all the problems we have with people. And since I live on the edge of one of these large tracts of land, I'm, you know, this concerns me directly. I don't want people lighting fires back there in the summertime when they shouldn't, and, and all kinds of other activities that could go on. I want deputies available to patrol those areas. However, I don't also see the need to pay people twice for the same job, the state and, and locally. So, so I'm glad Gabrielle Gilbert brought this up, and I hope you'll take this seriously as an opportunity to build a better relationship with Fish and Wildlife, and we'll help you, because if they don't show up, you know, we'll, we'll be happy to put pressure on them to do that. They should do that for the people in our county. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. We'll go back in the room. Anybody in the room have citizen comment for us today? Come forward, sir. State your name and general location for the record.
Glad you, congratulate, congratulate you for taking up that moratorium again, ended using ordinance procedures for setting up proper ordinances. And I would say, I guess there's a meeting of 60 days from when you pass that, you're going to have a meeting open to the public?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Within 60 days is way long.
Within 60 days, yeah. I would sooner, you know, we just got to get people, more people interested and do something to come and talk to you. And it's very important. It's the fact that you're changing your position and you want to start regulating and do the way we should, as far as bringing new businesses in, into the county and how we handle them and how we made the money, make the money that we need to get, to set it all up for them. We didn't make much money on all the procedures so far, so we, I'm glad you did that. I'm glad you're going forward, and I'm glad to see that leadership has changed, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Yep, and I will use a little chairman's prerogative to respond right now, since I know you usually don't stick around for our responses later. So, yes, technically, we'll have a public hearing to decide essentially findings of fact on what we want to do from there. The decision could be the same decision that it was the last time we had a moratorium, and that was, we're not going anywhere, but we're abolishing the moratorium. That is a potential. I only know what my vote is. And then my vote would be to remit it to the planning commission to have further public hearings
Very good.
and further public input to come up with their recommendation on where we should go from here. So there should be ample opportunity for public testimony, and I fully agree with you, especially when we get to the planning commission stages, people need to show up.
Yeah, those people are, there's some brilliant people on the planning commission. We need to get their brilliance told to the public.
Hopefully, when we have the public meeting, more than 23 people show up.
Oh, yeah. We're going to work on that personally. I know I am.
I'm working on it myself.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for answering me before midnight.
Yep. We are, actually, I'll bring that up to my seatmates. If there is something pertinent and you want, did you have an answer? Do you want to go there, too? Okay, sorry. If you, usually, we're going to wait and respond to the end, but if you have something you want to mention while we're doing citizen comment, just say the word. And.
Excuse me, there might be people trying to log in. Somebody just texted me and said they couldn't get in.
I don't see a waiting person? Yep, thank you, Ron. Not seeing him. We'll go back. That was in the room, so we'll go back online. Anybody online, one citizen comment, raise your hand or say here or something for us to know you want to speak.
Somebody turned their video on.
They've had it on for a while. Unmute yourself, something so we know you want to speak.
10 people are in the waiting room.
Greg Wagner with seats. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Wagner. Three minutes.
I want to thank Commissioner Zoller and Christopher for the solar moratorium. It's nice to have two commissioners who place the citizens' concerns of the citizens first. Moratoriums are a good method to use to allow citizens' involvement. At least you two commissioners realize this. Mr. Anderson has opposed moratoriums all along, and Mr. Anderson has stated many times that moratoriums hurt the citizens and there is a loss of control, and that's completely wrong. Moratoriums serve to protect the citizens and provide local control and input from the citizens. Now, we have a solar moratorium, and I'd like to know, Mr. Anderson, you intend to meet with the Cypress Creek Renewable Representatives on Friday at 1:00 PM, and this is going to be a private meeting. I'd like to know why this couldn't be a public meeting, so the citizens can hear what you're going to discuss with Cypress Creek. Renewable, that would make it very transparent. And another issue is, you have operated your unpermitted short-term rental for six years. When would you go through the established change-of-use process as required by Mochi Limblad, the planning director, and obtain a conditional use permit for your, your illegal, unpermitted, short-term rental? As a leader, you should follow all the county codes. Why don't you? Due to this conflict of interest, you should step down from being the code compliance officer's boss until you comply with all the required county codes that every other citizen must comply with. That's the reason we have codes. You cannot continue to permit, have an unpermitted, maybe unsafe, short-term rental, because it can set the county up for a lawsuit should somebody get hurt on your property and the county knows they have a short-term rental problem and haven't addressed it. So you need to step up and be a leader and go through the change-of-use and get a conditional use permit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner, and, and thank you for being concise and to the point and not using all of your time if it's not needed. That way, somebody else can use it. That's good. Anybody else in the room have citizen comment for us today?
Sherry, raise your hand.
Okay, not seeing any. We'll go back online. I see Sherry has her hand up. Name and location for the record, please, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Sherry in Houston. And just real quick, as we're introducing ourselves, just as a suggestion or a request, when some, when you have some of the county employees come up to discuss things, if you could also have them introduce themselves and what department they're with in the future. They do sometimes, but not all the time, and that would be nice to know, you know, who, who the person is and what department they're with sometimes. But what I'm really wanting to comment on is my gratitude to Commissioners Zoller, Commissioner Christopher, for seeing the urgency in protecting the beauty of Clickatuck County and our farmlands, and just environmentally looking out for our future, and really taking a look at what industrial solar is and who owns it, who benefits from it, the environmental damages that can come from it, where it's sited, you know, and as, as we go forward with this moratorium, and it looks like, you know, there will be a lot of support, as you can see, and you've heard that we're going to, the people will ask for it to be remitted to the planning commission for further review and suggestions. So again, my, my gratitude that you are seeing that Clickatuck County can be much greater than a industrial solar wasteland owned by corporate foreign entities that probably don't have Clickatuck County's future in their best interest. So I look forward to exploring what this industrial solar really looks like and going forward with this. I hope that you consider the people who have spoken up about industrial solar and where it's placed in Clickatuck County for the last two years as people who care like you do, and I hope that you consider us your allies as we move forward, as we educate ourselves on really what is industrial solar and what it does, what it looks like. And I appreciate the bringing up of strategic planning for the future of Clickatuck County. I appreciate that a lot. Clickatuck County has a lot to offer, and I've always thought the city of Goldendale had a lot to offer. For many years, my family drove, drove from Vancouver to Yakima to visit my, my dad's parents. I have plenty of fond memories in Goldendale, and I believe it can be a lot. And I believe that if, when we look forward as our strategic planning for the east side and the west side, that we have the best future for our county in mind. And thank you again for your work and looking forward to a future of a prosperous and healthy county.
Thank you, Ms. Bosque, for your testimony. Is anybody else in the room have testimony? Hearing none. We will go back online. Anybody online want to testify before the board about any issues related to the county? Unmute yourself, raise your hand. See some new faces and some new names. But nobody unmuting themselves. Going once. Anybody in the room going twice? Nobody is waving their hands at me, so. Okay, is, do my seatmates have any responses to any of those comments that they would like to respond to?
Yes, I'll start with Gabrielle, and thank you for checking in back on that childcare issue that I'm looking forward to working with you with. I do not have information. I'll have to gain that from you. We can talk about that, but I'm gathering documents, plans, whatever I can find to put my files together. My working order here at the county is in its second week, so they're still transitioning my computer and my phone, and you are right, that email has not been working. They are working on it today, and they're transitioning another way for you to get to me that you can click on and send me an email. The alternative is, is to copy and paste it into your own browser and then, or over to your own email and not go directly through our system to see if that'll get to me. And be sure when you reach out to me to send your contact information to. And I know we did talk during the campaign, and I believe in my stack of everything from the campaign, I have your phone number, and I will find it. And just thank you to Ron Casala and Greg and Sherry for checking in again today, and everybody else that's online and in the room. We appreciate your participation.
Thank you. I would agree with that. Mr. Anderson, do you have anything?
Sure. Gabrielle, with regards to the Latino population, I'm sure I and likely the health director will get in contact with you about what we are doing with regards to the Latino population. With regards to 911 and WDF, I would advise you to stay on the, the line till 1:30 when we have an update from our, our emergency management director. With regards to everyone talking about the moratorium, I will reserve my comments for discussion during old business. And I think that's probably enough. We're running out of time, and I want to give you time.
All right, I would, I guess with the 911 and the Fish and Wildlife interlocal agreement, I would, I guess, say the same thing. If you want to wait around for the emergency management update, he may or may not get into that topic. At his discretion, we will, I will definitely say I need to do more research on that topic to be well-versed enough to answer questions. Looking through everything else. That's, that's all I have that isn't repetitive.
Mr. Christopher?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I think maybe that it would be a good idea, I mean, you guys get plenty of time that you could extend, if it's needed, extend comment period to where everybody gets to, to get in on a comment. If there's, if, if it's 1:30 and there's no more comments online, then I would go along with your program that you have now, but if there is, it should be extended. I can't see whether it would be a problem with that, because you have a lot of options. I mean, there's days that you decide that there're not going to be any meetings because of some kind of junket or something you have to attend. But anyway, you can arrange it if you want to. That's, I guess that's up to you, but the employers of this county deserve to have full attention of the commissioners. And when you, basically, when you have, still have people on the line and you shut the comment time off, you're ignoring the citizens, the rest of the citizens. So the only people that really are important are the ones that want to get involved and comment on the county issues, and if they're still online, I think that's rude, that you do not keep it open until everybody has had a chance to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Eldred. That was Dell Eldred, by the way, for those people that didn't hear him, catch his name. I don't know if you were on Dell, but I did ask for any comment in the room and online. With a first, a second, going once, going twice, nobody wanted it, so that's when we spoke. And then after we spoke, I don't believe you must have been online for the going once, going twice, going three times, but we did give you your time to speak. We are now over 1:30, so we did exactly what you were requesting of us to do.
I never heard, I guess I never heard that part of it, but I had a, I could, I could use 10 minutes if I wanted to, because the amount of issues that are facing us right now are pretty, pretty important as far as the public has to be notified.
Your time is expired.
Okay, yeah, I know.
Time is up. Mute it. All righty. 1:30 citizen comment is over. We will move on to department update from emergency management director Jeff King.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Welcome, Commissioners Oler.
Thank you.
So yes, one item on our consent agenda has already been discussed. We have two today. City of Goldendale 911 Dispatch and Radio System Users Agreement and the 2022 SHSP Grant Agreement. I have the city interlocal agreement on my agenda later on if you want to discuss it now or then.
Doesn't matter to me.
It's up to you.
I'll take it in order once we get down to there.
There you go.
It also includes the City of White Salmon. So Public Safety Radio System, the performance and functionality. I regret to report that we're having a microwave radio failure between the Juniper Point and Stacker radio sites currently that started about a week ago or so. Right now, that microwave is on the redundant loop. The primary microwave path has failed completely. Fortunately, because of the way our system is designed and we have that redundant loop, there's been no service interruptions to the users. However, that makes us vulnerable if something goes wrong with that redundant loop. So they are troubleshooting to see exactly what the cause of that failure is currently and have been. And when I get that report, I will be moving forward with emergency repairs to whatever it is that is needed because that condition makes us very vulnerable for Public Safety Radio System use and functionality. On the maintenance side, that has been the primary focus for the last, like I said, two weeks or so. The Kesar Ridge Site Microwave, which I've talked to you about before, we're in the process of doing a workaround for that, or making that workaround permanent. And as we've discussed, new item is some surplus equipment that is potentially becoming available from Yakima County, which will give us more longevity in our microwave and our page channel. Some more of that equipment that we can get from them at little to no cost that we will then have as spares in our system. And if what I'm being told is correct, we could pretty much rebuild our entire microwave system with the spares that they have if everything lines up and it is exactly what we need. So that would be a very good thing. So I'm working diligently to secure that equipment if possible. Still on hold with Flat Top Security Fence and the other Tier One and Tier Three Annual Report Items. In follow-up, radio site lease agreements, have several of those things in the process and pending for different reasons. Yeah, there's nothing really new to report on those. The radio project, continuing to facilitate the work with our Tier One Provider for that, two microwave systems, one for the security camera and one for the Public Safety Radio Transmissions. The 900 megahertz license has been approved, which is for the Public Safety Radio Transmissions as well as the alarms for all the equipment and security and so on. Any questions about the radio system, radio project?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay, then I'll move on to 911 call-taking and Public Safety Radio Dispatching and over to Chief of Operations, Filiberto Ontiveros.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Well, it's a pleasure to be back. It's been a while. So that being said, we are, our staffing situation has improved. I believe Jeff mentioned at the, one of the last updates, our last communications officer that was in training, came out of training at the end of December, mid-December. So we are now currently have two full-time openings and one casual opening. The shifts are still being filled by the temporary casuals and one casual employee that we have. And we are getting ready to do interviews. We're scheduling those now so we can move forward and start that process again. So it has been very welcoming to get up to a much better staffing situation. So one of the big things this month, with all the work that everybody's done, we, well, yeah, let me back up. It is actually, one of the good things this month is to recognize those communications officers that have been with us and stuck with us, especially last year. One of them is going to be, is Vicky Ramsey. She is going to be entering her 20th year of Public Safety Dispatching with us. So that is, that is great. A lot of experience there. So we'll be celebrating her this month, as well as Hannah Walter. She is going into her fifth year this month as well. So longevity is always plus. It brings all that experience they've gained over, over time, and it's, it's good to celebrate that. So any questions? As far as operations and training, we're catching up on some training. And the 911 phone system update project that has been completed, our phone systems are up to date. We are still working on the text-to-911 project that has been pending, and we haven't been able to move forward due to the staffing situation. State Access System Remote Technical Audit that was open last year, that has been completed, and our audit has been closed. And glad to say we passed that audit and moving forward to the next cycle. Continuing to work with the Sheriff's Office vendors on integration of their body and video, vehicle video camera systems into CAD in our records management system, that's still work in progress. Also work in progress is the work with county IT and buildings and grounds to update our dispatch consoles. We have the equipment now. Unfortunately, due to winter conditions, new projects have to have, be set aside for them to work on those winter issues. So we're working with them to get that going again, as well as Quik'atack Fire District 7 or Rural 7. We've moved forward, and I believe we're at the completion stage of integrating their new system so they can continue gathering that notifications and information into their system. So it's only thing to report of this week or over the weekend, there was a phone outage. There was intermittent calls being lost when they were coming into the dispatch center. We were able to narrow down that that was only affecting one cell company. 911 phone lines were not affected at all. Incoming 911 calls were not affected at all. These were the regular administrative calls to dispatch and identified that it was calls being made from US Cellular users. Everybody else, local landlines and other carriers were not affected.
And for clarification, anybody using US Cellular trying to call in, whether it was the admin lines or 911, would have been having an issue on their network. It was not our equipment or with Lumen in that phone system. However, the complicating factor was that the Sheriff's Office and other law enforcement used US Cellular for all their officers in the field, so that complicated their ability to call into dispatch and so on. So, yeah, Phil and I spent considerable amount of time over the weekend tracking that down with Lumen and making sure it wasn't us or them. The end result was it was US Cellular.
Any questions? Neither on any of those issues. Okay, so I'll turn it back to Jeff in regards to the agreements.
Yes, user agreements and renewals. City of Goldendale Agreement Renewal is on your consent agenda today until the start of this meeting. So I'm hoping for...
Yeah, I'll go. So as you can see from reading the agreement, it's a 3% increase over, you know, and it's right around $45,000 for the year. I think it would behoove us to think about this in terms of, we have had large increases in that department, including, you know, an upwards of 18 to 20% increase in wages. We, you know, along with the other issues that we're dealing with over there that are going to cost us more money. And so what I wanted to do is, does it make sense to keep, we're renegotiating the contracts for the Superior Courts or the district courts. And we're looking at something that we spend, you know, nearly $700,000 of county dollars on where all of our agreements with the juniors, whether it's the cities or the EMS district, only accounts for about $100,000 of that. Do we really want to enter into a five-year agreement with a 3% inflator when our costs have went up significantly? And so that's why I would want to pull that. My advice would be, and I was running the numbers on, you know, how much it costs per person within the city for the city cost versus how much per resident it is overall, and there's a huge disparity there in those costs. And there could be a lot of reasons for that. And so my, my thought is, it would make a lot, it'd make me feel a lot more comfortable knowing where the budget's going to be in the future to not do a five-year agreement, but do a one-year agreement with regards to this contract with both the cities, because I think we're going to need to look at this a little deeper. I'm also well aware of how long it takes to renegotiate these agreements, having done that with the city, with the district court, and I would say, and they've already set their budgets for 2023. So I'm not saying we change 2023. I'm just saying we should set that agreement for one year and start looking at this because, you know, we're spending a lot more money on the 911 system, and we're asking for 3% increase from the other people who use it.
You have opinion, or you want me to go?
Go.
I can see exactly where he's coming from. A five-year agreement, I would want to make sure that the, the dollars were right. And the other thing that scares me on this is the 3%. If we start seeing COLA, you know, or cost of living at 7% and 9% year-over-year, we're going to fall behind real quick at 3%. So to me, not only do I want to see the numbers true, but I would like to see that 3% mirror whatever Washington CPI is for the year. So it's just whatever the state inflation rate is, that's what their inflation rate is, you know, for our county, because we're not as high as, you know, Seattle at 9%, we'll get 7.2 or something like that. You know what I'm talking about, anyway. So those, those are also my concerns. I agree with Commissioner Anderson that I don't want to throw a monkey wrench into their budget, that they've already had planned for 2023, so I would like to see a shorter contract so that we can get a handle on this as we go down the road in preparing for the next contract without waiting five years.
And I can agree with both of you on that. That covers what my concerns were.
Okay, so I don't know how hard it is for you to, I guess for now, you would just be repulling it and having them re-sign it or re-submit it to us with a one-year agreement instead of the five? Is that your question?
That was, I was just going to make the change, but you want the CPI changed, so...
It can be on the next contract.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think we can approve, approve it today with the change from five years to one year for the contract agreement. I don't see why we couldn't do that.
You don't see any issues with that?
I'll have to go back to the cities. They, the City of Goldendale City Council did approve the current agreement with five years. But yeah, whether it's now, before you sign it or after, it doesn't matter. Both parties have to agree to it. I don't see why they would not agree to a one-year.
I'm sure, I'm sure they would love five, just because it's set in stone for five. And I don't, I don't want to, you know, panic them too much and say it's going to change all that much. But like most things in this county that haven't been looked at in a really long time, we need to, we need to examine that a little thorough. So if we can sign it today and just cross out the five and make it one, and that's good enough for you to haul back to the city and get a reapproval from them or try to, I would be fine with that, too.
Okay. Yeah, either way, whatever you choose to do, I'll have to go back to the city and get the approval.
I do think it's, it's probably better for us to sign with one and take it to them and say, well, this is...
I agree. Okay, yeah, I'll play with that.
Okay.
Moving on.
Yep. And then for, that is...
I'm assuming we'll do the same with White Salmon, so you might want to get ahead of that one.
Well, yeah, it's already in, come back from White Salmon, and was about to go into the county legal approval process, so we'll stop that and I'll go back to the City of White Salmon and make sure they know it's one year instead of five and, and bring that to you when I have it through our legal approval. Yep. And also, under this section, I have now scheduled a meeting with the state law enforcement agency heads that work in the county, State Patrol, State Parks, and Fish and Wildlife for February 9th to discuss, you know, their use of our dispatch system. To address in part the statements that were made during public comment time, it is inaccurate that we do not deal with fish and wildlife calls. We take all 911 calls from inside the county and from outside the county that are transferred because they are taking place inside the county. We receive all those calls. We either dispatch locally or transfer those calls to whatever agency is responsible for that type of incident that's being reported. We have always done that, and we don't have any choice on what 911 calls we take. If it's occurring inside our county, we are the Public Safety point of answering for 911 calls. Our relationship with not only Fish and Wildlife, as was addressed in comments, but all three state agencies has been in the past that when they can't reach their own dispatch, which all three of those agencies are dispatched through Washington State Patrol Dispatch Center out of Vancouver, but due to their radio system limitations in the more remote areas, or sometimes not-so-remote areas of our county, they don't have radio coverage or cellphone service. They use our radio system and our dispatch to communicate with us, and we forward that information on, or we just deal with their call directly. So we have not left anyone without service. I'll make that clear. As far as the other things that were brought up concerning what Fish and Wildlife does and doesn't respond to, or how the sheriff works with Fish and Wildlife, that is not within our control or our scope, and you would have to talk to the Sheriff's Office about that. But we answer and process all 911 calls appropriately, and any law enforcement agency in our county that calls in on the radio on dispatch and needs us are just not turned away.
I guess the question would be, is WDFW's primary dispatch, is that out of Vancouver?
Washington State Patrol.
Right. So they're dispatched out of Washington State Patrol, but we still do a lot with that.
So, if I may...
Yes, go ahead.
So there is two dispatch centers for Department of Wildlife. Their primary dispatch center, I'm not exactly sure where it's at. It is operated Monday through Friday during office hours, in which those calls are dispatched through their own dispatchers. However, they're not a 911 entry point, so usually those calls are either triaged first and then transferred to them, or we make the request for their units to respond while we handle the call. The after-hours, after-office hours, it is dispatched by State Patrol of Vancouver, and that service is more limited and, as well as their limitation of hours that the officers are out, so.
So if I call the WDFW line to report something, it's going to go to their dispatch Monday through Friday, and then they'll call, they'll either... They'll either call the person directly on their cellphone or they'll dispatch out of state. But if they can't get ahold of them because we know that the state's lines aren't as good as ours, then they'll, the state will call you and then you'll get in touch with them.
Correct, yeah, and a lot of times their dispatch center will call us because they've been trying to reach their officers. And they don't answer for whatever radio limitations they have. Their officers are most of the time monitoring our radio frequencies, so they answer up to us.
Yeah, we signed the radio frequency use agreements when I first started eight years ago. With all the agencies that operate in our county so that they would have access to our radio system if they needed it. But not with the intent that it would be their primary dispatch. And so.
I guess I'll. Attempt to clarify the callers and the, the testimony that we heard at lunch. I think where this is going to is on the cougar issue. I think that this is going to, nine-one-one gets a call about a cougar running in a playground. I, I would, I, I could be wrong and I'm sure if I'm wrong, they'll let me know next Tuesday. But they're hoping that nine-one-one will dispatch that cougar in a playground to Fish and Wildlife and not notify the sheriff.
So, if I may add a little bit on that. We have to triage the calls and essentially the nine-one-one dispatcher's job is to create a response, period. So if the call becomes life safety, we are going to utilize any resource in the area to address the life safety issue right now. Politics aside or other feelings aside, a cougar in a park. It doesn't matter if you are an officer, if you are somebody that can immediately address life safety issues. That's the resources we're going to reach out to. Most cougar calls or all cougar calls, we dispatch to the sheriff's office and we also advise.
The PDs, there's been plenty of them inside the city limits.
Yeah, sheriff's office, the PD, because that is their jurisdiction, but we also notify Fish and Wildlife. Fish and Wildlife will let us know if they have an officer in the area or they have. A support staff that deals with their animals that will respond, handle the situation, they'll advise the officers many times. I know here in the city, there's been response, wildlife department responded, one of their officers and. Another, he was like a doctor or somebody.
Biologist.
Biologist, thank you. And they were advising on how to deal with the situation, right? Yeah, so, yeah, but we will deal with the life safety issues first.
Something I'd like to clarify too, that I heard was the talk about an inter-local agreement. And from what I'm hearing for you is you have ultimate, you just answer your nine-one-one calls and service those without any. Agreements, that's a service we provide. And the suggestion I have is that inter-local agreement that they're thinking about might belong between the agency and the sheriff. That may be where that is.
Yeah, for any of those.
For the officers responding, how they interact with each other.
In emergency management, however, there's, there's, well, there's four functions, but for this purpose, there's two functions. The nine-one-one call-taking and then the emergency radio dispatching, two totally separate functions. In, in bigger centers, they're actually performed by different people. Can be in different buildings or different rooms. Here, our comms officers do both. They answer the nine-one-one calls and they do the radio dispatch. So on the nine-one-one call-taking side, you know, we don't have a choice. We take those calls and we. Notify or dispatch as appropriate the responsible agencies, whether that's law enforcement, fire. Emergency medical services, whatever it might be, or a combination of thereof. But the more that the state agencies use our dispatch system and our radio system. The more I am interested in having that discussion with them about having an inter-local agreement for the use of that. Because we're more and more providing them a service that we don't have an agreement, whether it is, has a cost component to it or not. I need an agreement, the same as that I did early on with the fire districts. There was, there was no use agreements in place, no way to enforce the rules, so on and so forth. So this meeting on February ninth will be to discuss what kind of agreement we can come to for radio dispatch services. And radio system use and set the parameters for that like we have our other local agencies.
Okay, that, that answers that question. I appreciate you gentlemen being candid and I appreciate your statement that politics does not. Isn't unmotivated in nine-one-one or how you dispatch, so hopefully that'll make a few residents feel a little bit better.
Okay, thank you. And I'll move right on to funnel one oh seven cash balance. We're still working to determine the best options. Did meet with fiscal manager on Friday, the sixteenth of December. Since then, we've received free reimbursements from the grant, all in rapid succession. So that cash balance is currently sufficient to cover our expenses. I am working to plan a meeting with fiscal manager and the auditor, as, as we have a new auditor sometime in February. But just for reference, and if you would like an update, full, full update on that later, we can, we can get together. But the September grant reimbursement took seven weeks to turn around. October took three and November took four, so that's, that's the last reimbursement we've received is from November. So that puts us in a good place, but earlier in the year, starting in about June or July. And, and through that September reimbursement. That we didn't receive until November, that's where that bridge is hard to gap for that cash balance. So that's what we'll be working on and that's my current status of that project. Any questions about nine-one-one dispatch in general? Moving on to emergency management program. The Kilkatay County Outdoor Burn Ban Code update, I have a draft ready for the first round of feedback. Excuse me. I have put into that current draft everything that I have received. From various sources, fire chiefs and so on, law enforcement over time. As well as the board's input. I have not yet received. Any positive affirmation that CASIFA has been able to recruit fire chiefs. To form an advisory committee to give their feedback in a organized and productive way. So I pinged them again after a month with, with no feedback. Hopefully I'll get some interest there and I will have a group of fire chiefs that I can send my draft to. Get their feedback, however, I've made them aware, or at least the leadership of CASIFA aware that if I don't hear back. We will continue to work through this process and we will have a new updated burn ban code. Before we issue the first burn ban of twenty twenty-three's fires. So, there we are. If you would like me to email you a copy of my draft that I have now. Before the fire chiefs and the sheriff's office get to look at it, I can do that. Dan, would you like me to email you a copy of my?
You know where I'm at on it, so as long as that's the finished project, you know. My, my only real. Push on it and change for new seatmates that may not know is I don't like the waiver process. I think if we're going to have a burn ban, but then give somebody a waiver to operate something that's. Listed in the burn ban, we're giving them permission to break the law. And we have the, we're allowing the county to be held liable if something goes on. So, you know, we gave them permission and one little spark goes on there and lights half the forest on fire. Yeah, sure, they're going to get sued and we might only be one percent responsible, but we're the ones with the deep pockets. So my goal is to, in the burn ban, list what's legal, list what's not legal, however, and, and that's it. There's no waivers after that, at least from me. How they want to go about that, that's, that's up to them, but I won't be signing it.
And that was the language I'm going to look at when you sent me your.
Okay, yes, and that's.
So is your, your belief then that like the waiver that we did for an outdoor pizza kitchen in Towne-Lyle. Are you saying you want to make that legal upfront or with a conditional use or what's your thoughts?
If, if that is going to be deemed not a fire safety issue because of the, whatever, the combustible material, the chimney they use, the spark arrest or the whatever. If it's going to be legal, just make it legal. If my Traeger pellet stove that burns on little woody chunks. Is legal, make it legal in the burn ban code instead of making me a criminal, which is where I am right now. So I don't want to give the waiver to the pizza oven because I don't want to have to give the waiver to the sweat lodge. Or deny a waiver to a sweat lodge and then be on that hole that I not permitted because I'm. Discriminating against one group or the others. Whatever our law is, it's our law and they either follow it or they can violate the law and then they're on the consequence of the county's.
But like when you get a waiver or in essence, it would be like a conditional allowance. That doesn't necessarily make it the county's fault if something happens, just because you allow something.
I would recommend you have a chat with the prosecutor. The way the legal system works now is. Even if you're really not at fault and your warehouser just selling a piece of land. Doesn't make it that you're not involved in the lawsuit and if. The person that has the pizza oven or the TP or whatever we're giving the permit for is only got fifty grand, but the county can be sued for twenty-five million. The jury could side with the people suing, the yes, we're only one percent responsible. They're not assuming we're going to get sued for twenty million dollars because we're only one percent responsible. The end of jury reward is you're getting twenty million dollars. I'm trying to reduce the liability of legal issues to the county. And I think we do that through not granting waivers. If you have a different opinion, I would. I'm encouraging it, but I would say I would suggest you bring this topic up with legal and get their opinion.
No, I complete agreement with reducing the liability and I'm well aware of the one percent rule and. And all that, I was just, you know, you can call it a waiver or you can design it in there because in essence. What the fear would be is, is if you allow your Traeger. Because it is, and then your Traeger burns down your house and burns down the forest. Is that going to make the county liable at that point because you allowed any open flame at any time during what would be considered a burn ban? You see that it's kind of the same thing.
It kind of is.
I mean, by allowing it, you're allowing it, which allows somebody to sue and I'm just, I'm not saying, I don't like the waiver idea either. I firmly think that, you know. Should be delineated what should be allowed. I really want to hear more importantly from the. The, the fire districts about, you know, you know, do they think that a little, you know, round fire pit in the middle of green grass. Two hundred feet on each side is going to be a liability or not? And is that something that they can look at on a case by case? I want to hear what, what they think. Because I don't want to make the decision.
Right, I think the kicker for legal is going to be, and I'm not speaking for legal, is. The rule is the rule and there's no exception to the rule. That's just the rule, whatever that rule is, that's just the rule. If we give somebody an exception from that, we're essentially giving someone an exemption from, for breaking the law. And that's where you, if there's a problem, you come into the lawsuit.
Well, I, I think the issue we had for that though, correct me if I'm wrong, was is the fact that in the burn ban, it had no. No ability for any variances. It was not written in there and so because it was not written in there, we could not legally do it. But we did it for, you know, twenty years, but that's, that's.
Just because things were done for twenty years doesn't make it that's the way they're supposed to be done. Any comments on this? You're probably new to the whole burn ban thing.
No, I sent through this last winter and I saw, I saw you ask to put yourself on the line for some of them and I understand the waiver and. Yeah, I, I would rather see it defined than have to worry about that we've approved a waiver and put our rubber stamp on a waiver.
Right, and I'm sure like, like the director said, when he gets done, he'll run it through legal and if legal sees something that's a problem, I'm sure we'll know about it. So as long as when you run it through there, you make sure he's looking at it for legal and not just going to sign off to it as to form. Will be covered in, or at least change it based off legal advice, so.
Yes.
I'm moving on with that.
And, and just to clarify, based on all the input I've gotten from, from the past board, now this board. And others, both fire officials and law enforcement, that is what my current draft has in it is. Narrower definitions for what is allowed during a burn ban. Because there are, there are so many appliances out there under the old code that would technically be considered illegal. It's so down to your, I like to, to use the little chief smokers. That are made in a river, right? Smoking your salmon in the middle of the summer with the hot plate and the chip tray. Technically, that was illegal to do outside. You can do it inside your house, your garage, wherever you wanted to.
Give a nice hickory flavor.
But if you do it in the out of doors, it was illegal. I don't believe anybody agrees that that should be illegal during a burn ban. That's something that can be done safely. Under the right circumstances.
Simple little chip pot, it throws ashes.
That's negligence. But yes, those types of things and the Traeger barbecues and lots of other.
Are you admitting to code violations, sir?
No, I'm not.
I'm not either.
That's what we need to fix and that's, that was, that's my intent and that's the input that I've gotten and that's the direction I've taken. Narrow definition of what is allowed during that burn.
And that's where I'm coming from. I, I, I want to make sure they're safe, but if we can remove some, overburden some. And give people back a little bit of their freedom, I'm better with that.
Understood, thank you.
Yep, thank you, sir.
And if at any point you want to have further discussion about this, like you can schedule a workshop or whatever we need to do there, just let me know. Okay, still on emergency management program, training and exercises. You can see in your agenda there, nothing has changed. Since we're getting close to the end of my time, one thing we've identified is since the COVID event. And the, the activities over that first two years specifically, or eighteen months that we had the EOC stood up and staffed. A lot of our volunteers burn out, so volunteer recruitment is now becoming a focus. And I'm happy to say that we've already gained a few quality individuals that have started to apply since we put out the word. We need to replenish that emergency management program volunteer base. Then listed are all the grants. We just have completed the last project in the twenty shush grant. Which was communications equipment for the sheriff's office. And the other grants are listed there. The emergency notification system, we used it for the. Weather closure of county offices on December twenty-third. It worked very well by all reports. I think there was only two or three people that said I didn't get the message and. It's because they hadn't, you know, signed up, didn't have their information, you know, new employees that come on and things like that. That list is continually in maintenance, trying to add new people and take them away on the county employee side for that specific purpose. As well as the public signing up and so on. Any questions about the emergency management program activities?
Good.
Okay, the, one thing I would like to add goes along with recognizing our employees for their years of service as well. And we are creating a wall of recognition. Mentioned it before this meeting. Take photos of all of our folks and, and have them on a wall that's right now blank inside our building. But one of the other things that we have started doing on a regular basis last year was employee of the month. And for the month of January, Debbie Stover was selected by her fellow staff members as the employee of the month for emergency management. Congratulations to. Congratulations to her.
See, if you'd have started that like ten years ago, you'd have had enough sound deadening on the walls that you wouldn't have needed panels.
Possibly. Did not consider that. Yes. Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you.
Nothing further, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you both and continue on. Ms. Carter, you're back. Do you need something from us? Okay. Need charge waiting for later, I'm assuming, so. Uh, any new business for us today? I guess. Might need to push that one back. And let's bypass new business for now. Run the old business. Uh, resolution and support of the board's motion on Jan- January third, twenty twenty three in the matter of enacting a moratorium on the siting permitting and acceptance of permit applications for large scale solar projects over one acre in size in township ranges three fourteen, three fifteen, three sixteen, four fourteen, four fifteen, four sixteen, four seventeen, five fifteen, five sixteen, uh located within Clickate County. I would entertain a a motion to uh support and sign that resolution.
I would second that motion.
You have to be the first.
Oh, okay, sorry. I would motion that we support and sign the resolution for the moratorium on the solar. And do I have to quote the whole?
That's why I read it for you.
Okay.
All right, I will step down this chair and second that motion. Uh, any comments?
No, I think we have some discussion on this. If I may have the chair's time.
What's that?
He said I have some some discussion, comments, questions.
Go ahead, sir.
It was brought up last week uh when the motion was made that um no one had asked the prosecuting attorney's opinion either as to form for this res- and and so my question would be is in the last week, have you went and spoken to the prosecuting attorney about this mo- this moratorium?
Um, I spoke to him about it this morning.
Okay, so again, I'm looking at this in terms of liability and in so I have some questions, I guess, some some fears because, you know, this is this is big stuff. This is big money. These are very large companies that have, you know, pretty significant law groups behind them, I would assume. I don't know for a fact. But what I don't want to do is is create a procedural issue in which somebody can, you know, fight our moratorium. So my questions, because it doesn't sound like we've taken it through the full process. Did the moratorium need to be placed on the agenda last week um rather than just doing it in or pending? What it did it need to be put on as new business so that the public would know about it? And so my question would be, is that an Open Public Meetings Act violation? If it if it is, then it would be null and void and somebody could come in and sue and say your your moratorium is, you know, null and void. I definitely was concerned with the statement um that Lori helped write the moratorium previous um to her taking office, which discussion's fine, but I mean, that's in essence, decision making. And so my fear would be, is that an Open Public Meetings Act uh violation? And is that a loophole in which somebody could could null and void the moratorium? Uh, my next question, which would have been the question for prosecuting attorney would be can you put a moratorium over specific townships without findings or rationale of why you picked those areas? And then one of my others, and I'm not, I'm not saying you guys meant to do anything wrong. I'm just asking the questions so that we make sure that we're doing this procedurally because it was very clearly explained to us that when it comes to land use decisions, it is procedures that get appealed, not the decision. And then the other one that I'm really concerned about is um can you, Commissioner Christopher, enact a moratorium over an area incorporating an area with a known or possible project in which you've recused yourself from any actions? I know when you said you had recused yourself, it was it was a year or so ago and you can, I would hope to be able to change your mind, but that would be a fear that I have and a question um in terms of procedure. And so the question would be is, do these amount to potential legal liabilities with regards to the moratorium? Um, and do you feel for feel safe moving forward without asking these of and getting a a true prosecutor's opinion written? It's one thing to, you know, say we've talked to him. It's another thing to have a prosecutor's opinion on all of these so that we're we're sure that what we're doing is one hundred percent legal and cannot be voided. So I guess I don't know if you talked to the prosecutor about all those or not, but that's that those are my first set of concerns. It's just, I I'll be honest, it was a very weird way to enact a moratorium that that there's a lot of process usually involved in that. I mean, if the motion had been to direct staff to write a resolution for a moratorium that will then take public comment on and and hear about it and put it on the agenda for this week, that would, I think that would have one set of standing, but the fact that we just enacted the moratorium, I fear that that's procedurally potentially puts us in a in a very litigious position knowing who we could potentially be dealing with. So those are those are just some of my concerns and uh I doubt uh we want, uh maybe you want, do want to send it to the prosecuting attorney for a legal opinion. My second question before this board is I know what I think, I know what the goal is. And I think that the goal that that you have both put forward is to take a pause and have no development occur within those townships. And if that is your goal, my fear for the county is is that the moratorium will get nowhere near getting to that goal. And I'll give you the reasons and rationale for right now. And I'm and I apologize, uh, last week I didn't have any of this available because I had no knowledge that this was coming. So it's kind of a weird thing to be having the question now.
Thank you.
Time to look into it. But if the goal is honestly to ensure that no solar can be developed during our moratorium, I have to be honest, from everything that I am seeing, that is patently impossible. And the reason is Yakima County Board of County Commissioners issued a moratorium over all the lands within Clickate or within Yakima County as a fully planning G M A county that has pretty stringent and they just updated their comprehensive plan and everything. And what I came across was is that the FSEC, Energy Facility Site Evaluation Council, has found with regards that a moratorium is not a land use planner zoning ordinance for the purposes of FSEC's consistency determination, which is what FSEC has to do, make a consistency determination. And so that's pretty much scared me because in essence, that means that FSEC is going to ignore the local moratorium. Now.
I disagree, but go ahead.
So so I went, I went deeper into this and which with Yakima County, the Board of County Commissioners passed their moratorium after the FSEC or after the application to FSEC. And in which case I would say, sure, you're you're a little late to the ball game. That was already done. And so that would be, that would be an absolutely wonderful statement that would that would in this instance protect us, I would feel. The problem with that is you have to see what FSEC ruled on. What FSEC ruled on previously with regards to Kitata County, and this is the docket number EF one seven zero eight two three. And Kitata County put a moratorium on energy facility applications. And what happened is it went through the court process and Kitata County put the moratorium in place before, now before the application was filed. And so what you have in front of you with this docket is the conclusion from FSEC's land use consistency determination uh with regards to zoning ordinances. And uh you can see from both of these pages, and I would have highlighted it except for both pages, I'd just been highlighting the whole thing. And what that came out is is that FSEC said because of the court cases, Save Our Scenic Area versus Skamania County, something that we all have been dealing with for many years, as well as uh Friends of the Columbia Gorge versus the State Energy Facility Site Evaluation Council. Because of both of those court cases, what they're finding that a moratorium is not a land use planner zoning ordinances for the purpose of FSEC's consistency determination.
Right.
Thus, the problem would be is if our true goal is to stop or take a pause on anything happening out there, plant placing a moratorium locally stops any energy company from going through the county process only. FSEC has ruled now multiple times that going through their process, it will not stop it at all. So in essence, if we institute this moratorium, what we are doing is we are saying that that we don't want you to go through our process, but feel feel free, go through the state process. The state's already ruled and determined that they will process that application and they will process that application in an expedited fashion with regards to the Yakima County site. So what we're in essence doing is we are abrogating our local authority and everything uh that uh was the reason why uh two years ago, we felt that uh the moratorium was not necessary because our entire goal was to have the solar companies or large energy companies go through our local process. So what we are doing is we are absolutely not stopping of an energy company from going through the FSEC process and the FSEC will make the zoning determination irregardless of our moratorium. And what we've done is we've pretty much given away the baby, the bath water and everything. Um, I would also note that the company that continues to be uh being used as the example for this area is also one of the companies that is going through FSEC with regards to the Yakima County project. So you feel free to vote for a moratorium. My personal opinion, uh, as it always has been, is uh a local moratorium removes any say that we have through an environmental impact statement, through scoping, through a C U P and all the determinations. What we are doing is we are abrogating that to the state and based on what we are hearing from the state and the state legislature, as well as the governor, is is that these will be shoved down our throats. And so my goal uh is it's been drug apart in in the uh the media and regularly here is that I don't care about local control and I don't care. Uh, everything I have been doing for the last two years has been to assure that we have local control, local decision making authority with regards to these large industrial scale solar projects. And I'm sorry, but from all of my research, what we're doing is we're completely walking away from that.
Okay.
I think.
I.
Go ahead.
I mean, I appreciate your concern. I appreciate you voicing your concern. I think your um legal findings are off. Uh, your legal interpretation is off. The reason Yakima County, uh, FSEC pushed through Yakima Counties is that Yakima County did the moratorium after the permit was received by FSEC. The deadline is when is the permit received? So technically, if Cypress Creek turns in a permit to the county uh or FSEC, while you're doing your speech, we haven't signed the document yet. It's good and we we get screwed. If we wait another week or two to get all of the findings and opinions you want, and then you come back with another week's worth of opinions or, you know, and it just stalls, that gives Cypress time to throw a permit in. And then, yes, you do a moratorium. It's too late. So I've talked to FSEC back when they were actually returning my calls. Um, and it all comes down to when is the permit applied for? Uh, is the moratorium in place before the permit is applied for? And if the answer is yes, there is no movement from FSEC. Uh, there would be no movement from the county. Now, when you start dealing with the Kitata County moratorium, you also have a problem with Kitata County because they put in a moratorium and just said, yep, we're going to be under a moratorium for like, I don't know, twenty seven years. Uh, we're not going to have any findings. We're not going to change anything. We're not going to do anything. We're just, we're just going to have a moratorium. You can't do that. And that is what the court said. You can't do that. Uh, just because you have a moratorium, that's not land use planning. You actually have to do the land use planning. You actually have to do the amendment to the comp plan or the E O Z or or whatever you're going to do. So I would uh disagree with your uh personal legal opinions on those two cases. Uh, I think we're safe. I think we're fine. Uh, as far as your other concerns that you had that you wanted to bring up to the prosecutor, I guess I would ask, uh, in the last week, have you brought any of those concerns before the prosecutor?
I've just been working on this uh the last day and I was hoping that this morning during executive session, we can talk about them.
I, and that that brings up another. I don't know whether the prosecutor is is happy with the moratorium or the wording or the liking or the procedure or the what have you. But I would imagine that if he was adamantly opposed, he would have mentioned something in our earlier session. With that, I I again, I understand your concerns. I am not willing to risk this community's future on waiting for another week or another week or another week in hopes that Cypress Creek doesn't turn in a permit. I've been doing that now for two years, trying to wait and stall and make Cypress Creek feel comfortable so that they wouldn't turn in a permit uh before the vote could potentially change. Now, whether the vote changes forever uh or like the last moratorium where it changes for two months, I don't know. We'll cross that bridge when we get there, but that's what I have to say. And what do you have, ma'am?
So just to be clear on my part, um, this isn't new thinking for me. I've sat through a lot of the meetings this year. It was the number one issue that came up under my campaign and it was really hard to deal with that at that time because I heard people and I heard their issues, but I had no information. So as we went down the line, I found out right away there was a void in information. And being a public person at that time, I wasn't privy to information or couldn't get any information or wasn't involved in any processes. So I could change my mind or make different decisions because that didn't happen. And then becoming a commissioner and walking in, that was still in my heart and on my mind. I came into this position and wanted to sit down and look at solar and several other issues and I have no documents. I have no files. I have no, this is what's been happening here. You can look at this. I have no way to educate myself but to uh pull things out myself, look at them and make decisions. And what I did find over this time was um And what I did find over this time was the solar planning being in such a void, and a, and a public void, did not go back under sound planning and consideration and consider all the other ordinances and policies that we have on the books. And we're in grave danger of going ahead and moving forward as is, and we have policies and things that we haven't combined into this process and say, hey, we better adjust that one. Just because it's a policy, it was adopted by those commissioners, approved by those commissioners, developed by the people, and we can't just shift it under the table and ignore it and move on with something new. We need to go back and address all the policies and make everything coordinate together, and then move forward. Because just as at risk, you're talking about what your fear is, my fear is, is we move forward and do something, those projects will get challenged anyhow for that. There is legal standing to do that. And I've asked those questions, and there is legal standing to do that. And to address your, your fears that we, Dana and I, somehow conspired and don't want any solar, nothing moving, we're not anti-solar, and I don't want to be labeled as that. I want to make it very clear, this is all a planning issue and a public participation issue for me. I think there's even levels at the state and ordinances at the state or RCWs that we haven't really considered. We have a high degree of public participation as a county in projects that we do, and we're missing that. And that's another suit waiting to happen. So I would like to stop, take another look, and move forward in a very considerate and very planned-out progression to make this a reality, rather than something that just gets thrown in.
So I guess my question would be, if you would like the, in essence, the Planning Commission to take up solar moratoriums, potential update to the EOZ, potential update to any other plans that could impact that in a strategic planning issue, that then could be its own motion for direction to the Planning Department. That doesn't need to be attached in any way to a moratorium.
My moratorium that I made was not to give direction necessarily, that this is just automatically in the Planning Commission's scope of work. This, this is a moratorium to hear from the public, to hear what the public would like us to do moving forward. And no, I'm not willing to pull the moratorium to have these discussions outside, or to give the, the planning director, you know, six months to accomplish this or that, and, and then if Cypress put in a permit, you know, a month from now, which would make some of your supporters very happy, but I don't think it would make most of the residents in the area very happy. So I guess, you know, I'm, I'm open to new discussion, as long as it's pertinent and a healthy discussion. Other than that, I would suggest we just call the question.
Well, I would, I would say, you know, when you, when you wrote the moratorium, you had at least a week to take it in front of the prosecuting attorney for a PA's opinion written. I mean, it's one thing verbal, it's one thing, a different thing. It's another thing where you and I, we can have a different or discrepancy on the Kitata County case, along with the Yakima case, and PA's opinion on that would be great. Because if, if what I'm saying and how I read it is correct, would you still feel, feel comfortable moving forward with a moratorium if that moratorium has zero impact on what FSSEC is doing? And now what you're telling Cypress is, go to FSSEC, don't come to us. And they, and that they, FSSEC will do exactly what they plan on doing in Yakima, it seems.
I have no doubt in my mind that your opinion is wrong, so I, I'm not worried about your legal opinion of the Kitata County, or the Yakima County case. My own discussions with FSSEC, when I was trying to feel them out to see what was, how they operated, before they, I think, finally caught wind of why I was talking to them and stopped returning my phone calls. I, I think I know how they operate up there, and I'm not, I'm not worried whatsoever. And if, if we have a moratorium, and we actually have a working plan on where we're trying to go with that moratorium, they will wait patiently for us to be done doing what we're doing, and then they will cite it based off what the new rules were that we created in the county. As long as we have a working plan that we're working towards, and not a moratorium that lasts 23 years, like they tried to do in Kitata County. So.
I have one question in transparency and education. Are we invited as a board to the Cypress Creek meeting on Friday?
You can't, we cannot all meet for any reasons without it being an open public media violation, unless we post it to the public first. So any meetings that are held with Cypress, or that they schedule have to be one-on-one, at least commissioner-wise, we all can't be in the same room for it.
Has Cypress not reached out to you?
I have to go look. I have so many things, and I have, I don't believe Cypress has, another entity has.
Oh, okay. I know what you're talking about. Yeah, I would, you might not have Cypress's info. I would, I would recommend that you talk to the clerk and have her pull one of the emails that were sent to, or maybe even the one that was, there had to be one sent today, that should be in your email folder, or she can get with you, that you can at least say, hey, what about me? Book a, book a, you know, meeting with me. And I, to be honest, I, I have absolutely no idea what Cypress wants to talk about, and I haven't talked to anybody that has any idea what Cypress wants to talk about. So the fact that they're still willing to have this meeting after a moratorium is really questioning to me. But we might see. With that, I'm going to end discussion. I think we've had a good, healthy debate on opposite sides of the issue, and we may not all agree on an issue, but we can agree without being disagreeable, which hopefully the public compenders can learn from sometimes. Anyway, with that, we have a motion and a second on engaging a moratorium to support the board's motion on January 3rd in the matter of enacting a moratorium on the citing permitting and acceptance of permit applications on large-scale solar projects over one acre in size in townships, RINs 314, 315, 316, 414, 415, 416, 417, 515, 516, located within Clicketec County. All those in favor of signing the resolution and supporting the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those oppose? Nay. Nay? The ayes have it, two to one. Next item of business is the consent agenda, and then item number two would need to be pulled from the consent agenda approval.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with 10 items, noting item number two has been pulled from the consent.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the 10 items on the agenda, pulling item number two, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We have no payroll until next month. We needed to do a little bit of executive, I believe, with HR, which is not in the room. We probably should go back into executive to discuss negotiations of publicly bid contracts.
Do you want to do any board pending or updates?
Well, and I think we will. The thing is, is I guess I'm trying to figure out how much, sorry, step away from the mic, how much time my seatmates are going to want for board pending type stuff, or just open general discussion? Because I know when I started, I guess, you know, I, I knew a lot because I sat in the room for two years and attended every single meeting, and, and so I, I think I hit the ground running, but it's still, it's still new, it's still overwhelming, you still have so many questions. And the minute I, you know, bang the gavel and say adjourned, our new commissioner can't ask us any questions. They can't say, hey, what's going on with the mill site? What's going on with this that, that they might need to know about because they're hearing from their constituents? So I want to make sure in each of these meetings, we have adequate time for each commissioner, especially the new one, to ask as many questions and sit here and have as much discussion as she needs to be brought up to speed. So the hard part is if we're trying to do the executive at the very end, that means we got to wait around and weed through all that and try to hurry it up, or we have executive and then come back for board pending. But if we come back for board pending and have some of those discussions, they won't be recorded. Otherwise, you have too many videos in a day.
Right. Right.
So.
That's why we always do the executive at the end. I don't know how much you have for board pending, but it's only 2:43. I've got just a couple of things.
Okay. Well, let's, uh, let's go ahead and do any new business or any board pending, and go from there. Go ahead, Mr. Anderson, sir.
Okay. I told the Snowden group that I would bring this up today, and this is on broadband. And what it is, is there's the federal broadband mapping program, and they are going to have a meeting Wednesday, January 11th, so tomorrow evening from 6:15 to 7:30 at the White Salmon Library. They're working with McAd and the Snowden Community Council on how to verify your information on the FCC's broadband map. Why this matters is because if that information is not correct, that will have a detriment to, or potential benefit, to your, to our, at the county level's ability to get grants for broadband expansion. And so that meeting is tomorrow from 6:15 to 7:30 at the White Salmon Library. They're advising you to bring your laptop so they can help show you how to do it. And I just, I was, I told everybody that I would mention that. I will mention that we were working on one broadband project on the west end of the county to apply for the NOFO, for the state grant dollars. There was a lot of money for it. And that company that was going to part, hopefully partner with the county, walked away because the grant dollars at the state level are requiring open access, and that open access is not something most providers are willing to do. Everybody wants to have a closed system because they don't want to let. So they just walked away Friday from a $5 million grant that we were looking at.
They figured that was going to happen the minute, yeah, no, that's not a shock.
But they took it all the way up to the, to the, you know, board level at the company because they had five different counties they were working with, and they said, no, we're just, we're not going to do it. We do have a chance, there's other, going to be two other grant programs coming out at the state level that have open access as getting additional points, but not a requirement, and so we're going to look to apply for that. And I do believe there is one project around the Goldendale area from OTC through the Reconnect Program that is applying for grant, grant dollars as well for fiber to the home. So we were trying to hit the whole county with all these billions of dollars available, but the state is kind of throwing a monkey wrench in that. So if there's any questions on that?
I would like to attend the library one and keep in track with that, but I have a conflict. I just wanted to let you know.
The other issue I have is something that we haven't looked at for a while because, well, we're always busy.
We're busy, really? I haven't noticed. At like 1:00 in the morning, when it's like, I need to go to bed.
And so this is our appointments to boards and commissions. This is something that Commissioner Christopher and I started, well, we spearheaded it when we first came into office two years ago. I'll be honest, I haven't looked at it recently, but we do have in our appointment procedure, when a new appointment opens up, we usually have a 90-day program in order to advertise to fill that position. I am not saying anything negative at all towards Mr. Barta. I think Mr. Barta is an amazing man, I support him. But our application should be a minimum of 21 days so that other people have the opportunity to apply. And this is the policy that we wrote, and I, you know, if we get somebody from, that wants to apply in District One when we've advertised, which we haven't done for about a year, which is one of the other reasons I wanted to advertise for all these, is because, you know, sometimes you'll just take any live body. But when a new position comes up, we usually, we want to do that advertisement. It's something that we both promised to do when we took office. And so I want to make sure from now on that all of us are aware of this, that we're cognizant of it, and that we, we do, we, we try to follow our policies as often as possible.
I'm going to have to bite my tongue on this one a little bit. Because for the last two years, any time there was an appointment to one of my boards, I had to follow this to the dang near to the letter. I had to bring two nominations forward. I had serious debate in trying to get any of them through, while either of the other two seatmates I had, when there was an appointment, I first heard of the appointment when it was on the agenda, not even discussion. So we've kind of had a double standard for the last two years, in the fact that now we're going to go back to enforcement of a policy that hasn't been enforced in two years is skeptical with me. I still go back to the belief that the commissioner, that as in that district, should, you know, maybe not have full right to appoint who they want to in case they want to appoint, absolute chaos. That, but to me, that would be the only reason that the other two commissioners should oppose a candidate that, that a commissioner in that district brings forward, and, and by all means, they have that right. If, now, if, if you have an opening in your district for a seat, and you're having trouble filling that seat, and you want to use the newspaper to advertise, I'm more than willing to expend county resources to put an ad in the paper to help you fill that seat. But I don't think waiting three months to appoint someone to say a planning commission seat when they might start hearing on the solar issue in a month, we don't know, and then they come in halfway through the process and aren't fully aware of what's going on because they weren't here for the first couple of meetings, is far more of a hindrance when we agree and appreciate the individual that wants to sit on the board. So I guess with that, I would, other than permission to post in a public newspaper, I would, I would ask the gentleman again to repeat his ask, if it's more than that.
Well, I was just making us all aware, and I also to teach the new board member about the process, you know, the, the program for appointments.
And I have.
I did, I did find a way through it, so that we said that what we're doing, and that is, should a midterm vacancy occur on any board or commission or committee for any reason, the Board of Commissioners may appoint a replacement member to complete the remainder of the unexpired term, which in essence is what you did when you assumed the position. Appointments to vacancies shall be for the remainder of the term. There's also something about a pool, the original pool, but.
Right. I'm not.
I need to interject just a second. Leaving Planning Commission, because I came to be as a commissioner, I understood that that would leave a hole, and I really appreciate Planning Commission and their role with us. And I did talk to the planning director, and I said, how does that happen? How does that get filled? And she said, well, that's, that's open right now, there is applications available, and it's going to be closing. I think she told me December 29th, or somewhere in late December, those could be accepted to be reviewed, to fill that position. And so anybody that I knew that might be interested in Planning Commission, there were several of them that I thought would be good applicants. I said, hey, check out the county website, go to the planning department's website, you can, it's open right now, go ahead and fill out if you're interested in sitting. And so when I checked back with her, she only had one application. That was what I understood was this process. So we may want to check with her if it was advertised correctly, or how that was opened up, but from her to me. But from her to me, it was open and available to fill out those applications.
Right, it is, it is available three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
So that has to be changed up here.
Wide open, uh, I mean, any, correct me if I'm wrong, anytime they want to apply, they can apply. It's posted on our website. If you look at the Commissioners page on the left-hand side, says volunteers needed. You click on that link, it'll go down to list the boards, explain what they do, list who's there, when their term expires, has an application to apply, which then goes into our shared drive.
So it does not meet the intent of this paragraph?
We have it far more open and ex- and inclusive.
Right.
Already.
Okay.
Then what is the intent of the paragraph?
It is open more than twenty-one days.
Correct, it's three sixty-five.
Twenty-one days is about the advertisement. From when it becomes open.
Uh, this doesn't say advertising, this is the application period, keyword should. Um, and if I remember right and we go back and watch the video, I'm pretty sure that originally said shall until I requested it being changed. Be a minimum of twenty-one days. It doesn't say anything about public postings of newspapers in that twenty-one days. And again, it's been open for three hundred and sixty-five days. Well, um, two years, so actually seven hundred and thirty-three days or whatever that math is on top of my head. I would say there's other, um, pages to this. There was four or five, if I remember correctly. One of those discussed, and I think it was, I think it was at your request, and I could be wrong, it could have been at mine, um, was an attendance policy. That you must attend, uh, whatever it was, seventy-five percent.
And that was at your request.
I currently have a member on the Planning Commission that's attended less than fifty percent out of the last three years. So I'm debating what I'm gonna do with that. Um, this person was reappointed last year by me. At that time, I had a conversation with them and told them that their attendance needs to come up and we have a rule of seventy-five percent. And in the last year, the attendance hasn't come up, it was fifty percent. So I need to, um, think about that one. And probably have a discussion with you two, um, about your thoughts on that. Because as we go through important pressing issues like solar or anything with, uh, critical areas ordinance, shortline, uh, comp plans, whatever, they have to be there. They can't just show up once in a while and then not know what happened at the last meeting. That's, that's just organized chaos. So, I'm, at this point, I'm, I'm, I'm on the leaning towards replacing that person. Because I have to have the commitment and I've already given them the verbal warning about the commitment a year ago. Um, but I will bring more of that data to you guys. We'll have a discussion moving forward. Anything else on this issue? Your issue, sorry, we hijacked it?
Nope, no, no.
It was good discussion.
Remember, this was just for discussion.
And this is good because I don't know that she knew anything about this policy.
No, I did not.
Okay. It's literally four pages, we'll have to find it and, and, uh, yeah. The, the purpose with this was to hopefully get, uh, more community voices actively involved so people added a role in their own government. And, um, to be honest with you, I'm not proud of it, but it pretty much fell out of its face as far as I'm concerned. No matter how much I reach out to people, for the most part, they're just not interested. So it comes down to just trying to find a warm body versus, um, it's disappointing, but anyway. Anything else, sir?
Not me.
Don't have nothing for us, for the good of the order?
Not today.
I do have one little piece of business that I believe. Somebody look at my calendar, just make sure I don't tell them talking about.
Oh, I did have one more.
Okay, go for it.
Uh, in terms of board pending, um, I think it would be, and I know Lee has a document that, um, I think is for board pending on the shared drive. You used to do it, or you still got that, that you're?
Certainly started off again. I continue to do it because you guys would never discuss it. I would be most pleased to.
So that.
I used to have it when I first started, I'd have it printed and I'd go over it literally at the end of every meeting and start popping things off. And I would say some of those things we would get done, but, um, yeah, that, that list and it's kind of like my own, I just.
Right. And so my thought would be is, is that we have a G-drive document for board pending that hopefully, you know, a lot of that, you're waiting on something, some of that, but some of that we might be able to shove off to one commissioner or a director or something so that we're, we're still making progress on this, even if it's slow going. And have that board pending be something that we're, we're talking about, that we know where it's at. So, so really no, nobody gets surprised, like, here's something brand new.
The commissioners are welcome to add anything to that.
Precisely. Precisely.
By Thursday at noon? When?
That's the agenda.
Okay, okay.
With that, those were, those were mine on.
Okay. I guess we discussed, uh, appointment to the airport board last week. We've given it a week for further, um, thoughts. And I guess I, I don't have any. And my decision is the same decision I had a week ago of, um, that I think Lori deserves the opportunity to sit on that board. So with that, um, if there is no ejection, um, which I'm not hearing any, I will step down as chairman and make a motion to appoint Lori Zoller as the Airport Board, um, appointment for the Clicktad Airport.
And I'll second that motion.
Play a order?
Yes, sir.
Whenever you have a board position that is, uh, that is for a three-year term, you would need to make a motion to remove said person from a board. Then make a motion to appoint a new person to that board.
We don't, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't currently have anybody sitting in that position. The term is expired. So, we were.
I put the resolution on, because I was trying to update everything. And I think that I made an error.
In, in the new resolution, because the original was for three years as all positions are for the Airport Board. It's a term.
Well, that makes it a little bit uglier, I guess, but if we have to go there, I guess I would rescind my motion, um, since there was a motion in a second. And I will, uh, make a new motion that, um, we remove Commissioner Anderson from the Airport Board.
Do I have to second before we have discussion?
Correct.
I will second.
Discussion.
Discussion?
Yep.
My concern again comes from my campaign, um, and lack of involvement and lack of transparency. And hearing from my constituents, uh, over and over about concerns in that area and lack of involvement of all parties, um, was a big issue, probably next to solar. I have never, and I want you to know that, um, accepted a meeting with the Airport Board or members of the Airport Board. I, I have not talked to them. But I would be approached during my campaign or at meetings I was at with concerns. And so I've listened patiently, um, and then sitting in and having members come in and asking for a change. And, um, I think if you remember a few weeks ago when it was pretty heated, I came to you after a meeting and suggested to get at least a mediator, to put somebody in the middle. And that, I answer to the public is where I'm at on this. And I think there needs to be some sort of change so that it can move forward in a positive manner. I like the idea that we're going to have a workshop with Dallasport on Thursdays. I think that's gonna, gonna be tough, but it's going to start opening up that so that everybody's included and everybody has their voice and can make decisions. And I'd like to see that for the Airport Board as well, because they're all interchanged and they all are bumping up against each other. That's my thoughts.
So I would say, there's a lot more to the Airport Board than the Dallasport. How you doing, buddy?
Just so you know, one forty-eight over ninety-three.
Is that good or bad?
It's really bad.
Sorry.
It could be worse.
Probably is right about time I'm getting three stents.
Will you let us know if we need to hit the button?
I, I have Nitro in my pocket, so force feed them to me if you need to.
So, there's a lot of other pieces to the airport. The Dallasport Water District is.
Correct.
Literally one small little piece. We're working on millions of dollars in grants for the South April Project. We are working on Phase Two of the Airport Development Park. Uh, we are working on a large number of really amazing things with regards to, uh, new ways for airplanes to land, um, using GPS. Um, I've been involved in all of those. You probably don't hear about most of that.
I do and I hear about members that are disincluded and they have frustrations.
Members of the Airport Board?
Yes, that are in the dark on a lot of the coordination of it all.
I, I guess I'm gonna interrupt as the chairman and, and remind my seatmates to, to, if possible, refrain from airing too much dirty laundry. Just, just, just one guy's opinion.
I mean, if, if there were issues with, uh, my abilities and what I've done for the airport and the Airport Board per se, I would hope that you would have spoken with the Chairman of the Airport Board, you would have spoken with, um, the other co-owners of the airport, uh, the City of the Dals and asked, I mean, you're making the decision to remove someone from a seated position. And just like I was speaking with regards to, um, solar and solar moratorium, I think, you know, uh, it's always interesting when a new board comes on, you want to see change, you want to make change. I would always say we want to ensure that the change we're making, um, is the logical, rational decision.
Can I, can I, sir? I understand this is, um, I guess you could say a nuclear option. It's not something I, um, look forward to doing. I was hoping this didn't have to go this way and it could go how it was going. And I'm not going to be one that airs, uh, the county's dirty laundry. But I would also say that I don't believe you're, uh, maybe as privy to some of the discussions that I've had, and I'm not just talking with people that live in Dallasport. I believe this change needs to happen. Uh, if anything, just to, um, build bridges, show solidarity, um, show we're working towards a solution. Because right now I believe, um, the, the atmosphere, uh, in the Dallasport area has gotten quite contentious. And if we look back a couple of weeks ago when Dallasport was here, there were being very contentious, you were being very contentious. And I think like Commissioner Zoller said, it's almost to the point where there needs to be a mediator. Do I believe you have far more knowledge on all of those issues than the rest of your seatmates? Absolutely, and I'm hopeful and hopefully you will, uh, be actively involved in the town hall type discussions with them, um, as long as a mediator can tell them, calm yourself and let's stick to the point and the same thing over here and work our way through it. I think right now if we continue with the status quo, um, pardon my pun, but the well has been poisoned. And I, I don't think there's any way to move forward without change. So I understand you're probably taking this really terrible right now. I don't want to be the one to do it, obviously with a blood pressure that just shot out of the roof. But in the, in the, that I work for the people, I sometimes have to do things that are unpopular. I sometimes have to do things that are potentially hurtful to people that I would consider my friend. Any further discussion?
Well, sure. And I don't want you to cry, sir. For the record, since it seems like decisions have clearly been made ahead of time in many different things with regards to Clicktad County. I have worked tirelessly for the last two years for the betterment of Clicktad County, for the airport, for the water district. And I have attended countless meetings and I have tried to work to point out when there is discrepancies, when there are issues, uh, when there are sadly sometimes false, outright falsehoods that have been stated, um, in public. And, uh, as I said, uh, it's pretty obvious my name has been drug through the mud quite a bit. And I would like the public to always know that I'm most definitely working in your best interest and trying to solve the problems as what I've always tried to do through my many years of volunteering and community service and public service. And that is find the most equitable solution for all those involved. And so I don't know what dirty laundry you may know or hear or whether it's true or not. But I would hope that, um, this board and the people realize that, um, it isn't in me to be malicious, it isn't in me to try to hurt anyone. And that I have only ever tried to do what is best for Clicktad County. Because God knows we don't do this for the money.
Right, and I guess I would take this opportunity to clarify, just because I say dirty laundry does not mean, you know, uh, whatever the hell you're probably thinking. So, uh, you can call that a, probably use the wrong words on that that made you think there's far more to what the hell's going on than what's going on. So I would retract the word dirty laundry, um, from, from that.
Well, to be, well, to be honest, um, having sat through these meetings, uh, pers- primarily with the Dallasport Water District. Negotiating and coming to understanding and working together is sometimes not easy. It sometimes, uh, creates a little bit of animosity towards one another, especially when you're doing the hard negotiations. Especially when there's people running around, you know, making up, uh, claims that are clearly not true. And I think we saw a few of those statements, uh, last Tuesday. And I have all of the documentation and had the meetings to prove those things that I would hate for you to be making decisions when you don't have all the facts. And, uh, I know sometimes we make decisions based on feelings. As you, as everybody's probably well, well aware, that's not something I usually ever do. But.
I, I think you're, I don't think unfortunately you understand why I'm making my decision or where I'm getting my information from. If the shoe was on the other foot, um, I think, um, I would hope, I would hope that you would do the same thing I'm doing. I would, as a public official, I would hope. With that, I'm gonna end debate, um, and call a question. There's a motion on the, on the table to remove Commissioner Anderson from the Airport Board. It's been moved and seconded. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Let the record show the motion passed. With that, I'd like to move forward and make a motion to appoint Lori Zoller to the Airport Board.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of appointing Lori Zoller to the airport board, say aye.
Sorry, I missed the discussion. Lori?
Yes.
Good luck, Godspeed, and I wish you all the best.
Any discussion from you, ma'am? Hearing none, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor of appointing Lori Zoller to the airport board, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I didn't hear you, ma'am, were you in?
Aye.
Aye. Three ayes, motion passed unanimously. Oh, the fun of being a county commissioner. Anybody have anything else for the good of the order while I look at my list real quick? I think I'm done for the day, but you know. HR, I have a quickie question for you that I meant to bring up beforehand. In the agenda, you had the NeoGod online agreement.
Yes, sir.
I was unaware that it was a two-year contract. Did you, did we tell us that and I just forgot it or?
Like, can't recall it. I knew it was a two-year contract, but only funded for a year.
Right, well, that was my question is, were you like, yeah, go ahead and do it. But then reading the contracts, like, two years and it's like, eh, okay. I'm not gonna pull it away from you, but, okay. Just wanted to throw that out and it was on my list to mention, I just didn't get a chance to.
The need for an executive session today is actually a closed session, not an executive session. I, I sometimes misspeak and call them all executive sessions and they're not.
So you want a closed session to discuss collective bargaining, proposals, negotiation, grievances, mediation, and/or arbitration, arbitration proceedings?
Yes, sir.
All associated with collective bargaining in accordance with RCW 42 dot 30 dot 140 print four. Issues of a general nature will be discussed in open session. How long do you want for executive session, sir?
I just need 10 minutes, but it's my understanding that you may want Jeff to join us. That's up to the commissioners. Jeff King, sorry.
Yep. Any, we good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, we're good with that. So we'll be going into executive session for 10 minutes. When we go out, we will be going into executive session to review negotiations of performance in publicly bid contracts when the public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause likelihood of increasing costs. Not sure exactly how long we'll be going into executive session for that one when we get done with this one. But when we get done with that, we will be returning just to adjourn. There will be no further business. For that one? Oh. I would say we'll start with 15 minutes for this one and we will probably start with 10 minutes for that one. And then we will be coming back and adjourning, noting that we do have a workshop on Thursday, January 12th at 9:30.